Well, it was a happy meeting.
To lead for Terry?
No, I, let's get going at 6:30. If I'm late, I don't expect you to wait for me.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 20th, 2014 City of Joliet Council Meeting. Mayor Thomas Gerani presiding. Please stand for the invocation, the Pledge Allegiance by Father Chris Crowe with Saint Mary Maggielmann Church. Father?
Let us pray. Almighty God, you generously bestow your gifts in abundance to us each day. We are most grateful for all that you do for us and for the favors that you have granted. As we gather together in your name, we ask that your enlightenment may come upon the members of our city council so that everything that they do may be done with your inspiration and your wisdom. God of wisdom and justice, through you all authority is rightly administered. Laws are enacted and judgments are decreed. Guide and support our mayor, members of our city council, our city manager and our city staff. Give them the strength to know your will so that all decisions may be pleasing to you. May their work be conducted with righteousness and may they always promote what is for the good and welfare of the citizens of Joliet. We likewise commend to your care all the residents of our city, that they too may be blessed and sanctified. Together may we all work for the betterment of our community and enjoy the blessings promised to those who remain faithful to you. For we pray to you who are our one Lord and God now and forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start with roll call, Mayor Gerani.
Here.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Here.
Councilman Girl.
Here.
Councilman Hug.
Here.
Councilman McFarland.
Here.
Councilman Morris.
Here.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Here.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Here.
Councilman Turk. First is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written with the following changes? Moving Council memo 232-14 and the proclamation after committee reports.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The motion seconded to approve, Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council committee reports, diversity and community relations report.
That would be me, and I have misplaced my minutes. I know Krista has an extra set. Wait, here they are, I'm sorry, apologize. Long day. Diversity Committee consisting of myself and Councilman Hug and Councilman McFarland met on May 8th at 4:00 PM in the planning conference room. We had an update on the Black Contractors Association and we're still working with them. Staff will present some current procedures at the next meeting used to monitor minority participation in the city infrastructure projects under current policy. And the, um, uh, the next meeting for that will be on May 28th at 4:00 PM in the planning conference room, so all are invited to attend. We also talked about discussion of city rental inspections and there was a concern raised by Alicia Morales and that has been put back to the next meeting as Alicia was unable to attend. We do have a discussion about the council redistricting proposal. And Maria Rosas was there and she initiated a discussion about the ballot that will create eight council manic districts in the city of Joliet and they're trying to get that on as a referendum in the November election. Also, discussion on city of Joliet affordable, accessible and housing needs. Sam Knight from the Will Grundy Center for Independent Living came to discuss their current campaign to create more affordable and accessible living and housing in the Will County area. It was a long meeting. There are also discussion about city of Joliet public transportation and that was led by Elizabeth Gonzalez from Pace. And they're going to come back for another meeting to discuss further what Pace can do to make it more, our city and our county more accessible for those that are handicapped and unable to get to places that don't have a car. And last but not least, the customer service for limited English proficiency and disabled residents again. And again, that will be reviewed at our next meeting on May 28th at 4:00 PM. So I thank all that attended and for their patience and that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Finance committee report.
Your Honor, one question on Councilwoman Quillman's report. Jan, during the discussion on the proposal referendum on the November ballot, are they going to provide the public at some point in time with drawn up districts so people can see that? See what they're voting on?
Well, we did ask that and they were very kind of reluctant to say how many signatures they had on the ballot. I believe they need 1,500 or so. And the question was asked about did they have a map and the answer was that will be for future discussion. So we kind of left it at that to see what their proposals will be.
Thank you. I was running late for the finance committee meeting, so I appreciate if Councilman Girl would give that report.
Sure.
Thank you, Councilman Turk. The finance committee met this evening. The finance committee consists of myself, Councilman Hug and Councilman Turk. We had one item on the agenda that we discussed and it was basically an old business item that we had discussed a few months ago and it's basically relating to refinancing or refunding some of our existing general obligation debt. We were presented today, or who attended today was Kevin McKenna of Spear Financial, who is the city's financial advisor. And what we had wanted Kevin to do is basically give us a presentation and kind of rerun some numbers that our investment banker had brought to us with respect to the refunding, just to make sure that the numbers were in line and that they seemed, they seemed in line with the marketplace. Kevin reported to us that they did, that the numbers looked good and that we're looking at refunding about, I think it was $6.3 million worth of existing debt and possibly issuing an additional $3.6, $3.7 million for a total of $10 million of new money to do some projects with respect to our water and sewer and some sewer treatment plants. Kevin McKenna feels that there's some very favorable financing out there. In fact, he felt we probably, since we're going to be around $10 million, it would be bank qualified and that debt would probably come in at less than 2.5%. So we're excited to hear that and our savings that we're going to get with respect to the refunding on the existing debt is going to be about $400,000. So Kevin did a nice presentation. Staff is going to work with Kevin and our underwriter to move forward with respect to the refunding and the issuance of new money, which would all come back to the council for approval. And your honor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Thanks, Jan.
Public Service Committee report.
Your Honor, the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Gavin, Councilman McFarland, myself, met yesterday afternoon at 4:30 to discuss the contracts, change orders, pay estimates, final payments and a couple of ordinances and resolutions. Found them all to be in order and recommend their approval.
Thank you.
They show no other reports. Next we'll move to Council memo 232-14, the resolution recognizing the month of May 2014 as preservation month and naming the Joliet West High School American Studies Team as recipient of the 8th Annual Historic Preservation Award. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
The motion seconded to approve, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Well, we've got an exciting day. Come on over here, guys. Yeah, back here, we want everybody to get a good look at you, right? Got an exciting day here. We're actually recognizing as the resolution is stated, the month of May as historical preservation month. And we've got some students here that have, have won an award from Joliet West High School, the American Studies Team, right? And we're going to introduce all of you guys here today. And we're also, we've got some, some plaques for you, some recognition plaques. And we want to thank you for coming down to this city. So I'm just going to go ahead and read the resolution and then Sharon Merwin is here from the Historical Preservation Society and she's going to say some nice things about you guys and your good work and we'll present you with the, with the plaque. "In recognition of your outstanding efforts regarding the Joliet Limestone Student Project and for winning an exhibit design excellence award at the Illinois Association of Museums 2013 Illinois Histor- History Exposition, the city of Joliet and the Joliet Historic Preservation Commission further recognize the leadership of teachers Luke Yaklich." I don't think Luke is here. Janice Sheehan, Janice, if you want to.
Here, I'm here.
Oh, Janice, there you are up there taking pictures. And the dedication of student team members Bobby Keen, Bobby. Brian Lyman, Brian. And Noah Slowick, Noah. So we recognize them here today. We appreciate all of their efforts and all of their hard work and we're also, I'll tell you, we're so thankful and we're proud of these young people for representing the city of Joliet so well as you did. So, guys, thank you so much. Sharon, if you want to come up and maybe say a few words and we'll hand out these plaques.
As Councilwoman Girl said, in May 2013 at the Illinois History Expo, three students from Joliet West receive an exhibit design excellence award for their presentation, Joliet Limestone. This honor calls to mind a famous quote from noted English author John Ruskin from 1849. "Therefore, when we build, let us think that we build forever. Let it not be for present delight nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will thank us for and let us think as we lay stone on stone that a time is to come when those stones will be held sacred because our hands have touched them and that men will say as they look upon labor and broad substance of them, 'See, this our fathers did for us.'" So now, 165 years later, we can say, see what these students and teachers have done. Let us thank them for honoring those fathers and mothers before them with their Joliet Limestone exhibit. By their work, they taught and enlightened us so that we may all remember and appreciate the resources that our community has been blessed with, the structures and environment we have inherited and the cultural and architectural treasures that we must preserve. The Joliet Historic Preservation Commission is very happy to give the 2014 Preservation Award to Coach Luke Yaklich, Mrs. Janice Sheehan, Bobby Keen, Brian Lyman and Noah Slowick. Thank you.
You guys want to say a few words? No? I didn't know if we had some future politicians on.
Next we'll move to the proclamation which is listed under mayor. It's honoring Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Joliet Area South Suburban Alumni Chapter 40th Anniversary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This Saturday, May 31st, is going to be a big day in Joliet. Over 475 ladies from the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority are coming to Joliet to perform over 100 acts of kindness or charity. This proclamation is honoring them and then afterwards, if you could make a couple of comments to let us know what you're doing. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Sorority was founded on January 13th, 1913 by 22 collegiate women at Howard University and since its founding, founding in 1913, they have clearly distinguished themselves as a public service organization that boldly confronts the challenges of all Americans. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta provides an extensive array of public service initiatives through its five-point program, Thrust of Economic Development, Educational Development, International Awareness and Involvement, Physical and Mental, and Mental Health and Political Awareness and Involvement. Whereas on January 12th, 1974, 17 dynamic Delta Women chartered the Joliet Area Alumni Chapter and in 2003, the name Joliet Area Alumni was officially changed to the Joliet Area South Suburban Alumni Chapter in order to encompass the entire South Suburban area. The chapter also added a nonprofit arm, JSEC Charitable Foundation, which functions under its own board of directors. Whereas the Joliet Area South Suburban Alumni Chapter will celebrate its 40th anniversary. In celebration of this achievement, over 475 sorority members of JASSAC have partnered with the JSEC Charitable Foundation to perform their second annual 100 Acts of Kindness and Service through Sisterhood, Kiss 100, in Joliet, Illinois on Saturday, May 31st, 2014. Now therefore, I, Thomas Gerani, Mayor of the city of Joliet, on behalf of the Joliet City Council, do hereby recognize and celebrate the legacy of these women coming collectively together to improve the community in which we live. Signed, Thomas Gerani, Mayor.
Good evening. Thank you. On behalf of the chapter president and her absence, Ms. Carolyn Dishman, myself, I am the first vice president of the chapter, Coretta C., and the entire Joliet Area South Suburban Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We would like to thank you for this honor. We want you to know that Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is a, is an organization of college educated women committed to the constructive development of its members and to public service with a primary focus on the black community in all underserved areas and communities. The sorority would like to acknowledge our source Tracy Payne and Ed Nebraska, along with source Jackie Pope, Tiffany Butler Waller, Latonya Harris, for being instrumental in bringing, being the visionaries behind such a huge public service programs that was initiated over a year ago. With that being said, this program has benefited different areas in the South Suburban areas and will continue to do so. We send a heartfelt, heartfelt thank, thank you to the entire city of Joliet, the mayor, all the councilmen and councilwomen and also to you, Councilman Bob, I don't know if I said your last name, Oderkirk, right? Did I say it right? Just for being supportive of the vision that the sorority has through recognizing our public service that our sorority has done and will continue to do, not only in this area, but the entire South Suburban area. So again, we thank you and may God bless you. Thank you.
Next, under consent agenda, approval of minutes. Recommended the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on May 5th and the minutes of the regular council meeting held on May 6th, 2014. Stand approved as recorded. Council memo 223-14, regular payroll for April 4th through April 17th, 2014, $2,987,246.22. It is recommended said regular payroll be approved. Treasurers' disport, disbursements for April 2014, $13,926,106.62. Regular claims for April 2014, $3,493,095.53. And treasurer's report for March 2014. It is recommended that treasurer's disbursements, regular claims and treasurer's report be received and placed on file. Council memo 224-14, position vacancies. It is recommended the city manager be authorized to fill two police patrol officer positions. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye, with the exception of those pertaining to my employer.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, under public hearings, council memo 225-14, an annexation of 1913 South Bridge Street. This includes a resolution approving an annexation agreement, an ordinance approving the annexation and an ordinance approving the classification of 1913 South Bridge Street to I-1 zoning. It is recommended said resolution ordinances be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
This is a public hearing. Anybody wish to address this? Seeing none.
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Ordinances and resolutions, under ordinances. Council memo 226-14, an ordinance approving the vacation of a 14 by 150.34 foot portion of an east-west alley located at 960 Royce Avenue. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 227-14, an ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of Patterson Road north of Laraway Road. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
That's true. Sure.
I don't, I just, uh...
Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Cindy Shroba. I live in Seneca, Illinois.
Okay.
But I'm the power of attorney for my mother's property and she owns this piece of property on here. We just got this letter. We weren't, we didn't get the letter for the April meeting, so we don't know exactly what place this is being vacated and how it's going to affect the property.
Kevin, you want to?
Mayor, we can check. She indicates her mother's property is over on Brandon Road, so they may have gotten notice just because they're in the radius.
300 feet, yeah.
But I can, I can, yeah, I can assure you that the, the properties that are adjacent to the road being vacated are all commercially owned. They're owned by either Centerpoint Properties Trust, Green LLC and the Old Incorporated. Those are the only adjacent property owners, Jeff helped me, who have, oh, Porterville County as well. So these are all commercial properties. It's not, it's not a residential property. It's not even farm property anymore. All commercial property that's actively in use for commercial activities with the exception of our land on the east side, which is all farmland that we acquired, gosh, eight, 10 years ago. So I, I think...
Do you know where that, the big pit is?
The big pit. That's further north.
Okay, so she's right adjacent to that, so...
So she's further north and along Patterson.
This won't really affect that.
No, I don't think so, no. They'd still have access into the town as they would normally go north. This just affects the portion of the land just before Laraway Road.
Okay.
Okay? And if you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer your questions for you tomorrow to reassure you. We do. We can, we can take care of it, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, any questions? I think we can clear this up. I think they just received the notice that staff sends out to the radius of people in the vicinity.
All right, thanks, Mr. President.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was wondering, since there's a little discussion, could she talk to Mr. Breslin during our meeting and then we can bring this back and then after her concerns are, you know, and then we can vote on it after she's resolved?
Where is the property located? On Brandon Road? It's not even...
The letter that we got said it was within 300 feet.
It's not even near this property.
Mr. Mayor, this time we did 1,000 feet. Mr. Keller indicated we always do a much larger radius.
Okay.
But we do these here and so was 1,000 feet.
I don't know if, if... Okay. I am, I don't know how familiar everybody else, but I'm very familiar with this. Yeah, and it's not even close. Yeah, right, right.
I was just thinking, rather than wait, let them discuss it and then we could come back to that?
We can do that. Okay.
This motion is seconded to approve, do they need to...
I think at this point, as, unless everybody's ready to proceed, and it looks like they're not, if we could just suspend action on this item for the moment and take up the next agenda item and return to it later in the meeting.
Just so they have some peace of mind.
Do we need to withdraw our motion?
No, it could, it's still made and it's of record. We'll just pick it up at that point when we come back.
Moving to council memo 228-14, an ordinance amending the city's weed ordinance number 7456. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Questions? Krista?
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 229-14, an ordinance declaring certain properties as public nuisances. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The motion is seconded to...
Oh, I'm sorry, Derek. I knew you.
I'm sorry. The Emory property, I don't know who this would go to. I know I, John and I received a phone call on this. Is it any way that, because it's going to be a while before it can actually be, I guess, demolished? But the neighbors were kind of concerned about maybe it being cleaned up. I believe a bank owns it. I don't, I was looking for the exact digits, but it's 212 Emory or something like...
I think it was Councilman McFarland raised the issue last night. And we'll, we'll take a look at the property, make sure it's secure and, and, and I'll get back with you in terms of how fast we can do the demolition, so you can make sure...
Because there was some safety concerns too. I guess it's a kid or something in the back and they was afraid that some children may wander back there.
Okay. Follow up on it. Sure, sure.
This motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Under resolutions, council memo 231-14, a resolution accepting and placing on file the Joliet Historic Preservation Commission annual report for 2013. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This motion is seconded to approve, Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 232-14 was previously approved. Council memo 233-14, a resolution authorizing the demolition and conveyance of 111 North Broadway to the All Saints Greek Orthodox Church. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Yeah, I'd like to thank All Saints for staying in Joliet and for staying in the neighborhood and I vote aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 234-14, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 311 Paulson Place and 649 North Bluff. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Quillman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 235-14, a resolution approving an agreement with the Miracle League of Joliet for the use of Silver Cross Field. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions?
The motion is seconded to approve, Councilman McFarland.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Um, I certainly approve of this, but because of my relationship with the Miracle League, I will abstain.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Someone who's been involved with this from day one, I'll tell you, if you haven't been out there to see those kids play on Saturday afternoon, it is amazing and it'll warm your heart, and I absolutely vote aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Pleasure to say aye.
Mayor Gerani?
I vote aye, and we finally got it done, and I was out there Saturday morning, and it is, uh, something to be, no question. Congratulations, Nick.
Thank you. If I just might have a second, I'd like to thank, and especially Mayor Gerani and Councilwoman Coleman and Councilwoman Turk, who have been part of the council since this project, but certainly, uh, all the council members have been in support and have been out there. Uh, so yeah, this was just a documentation of an, of an agreement that we've had for seven years now, so...
Finally.
Yeah, finally, and, uh, Jeff helped with that, of course, and all the staff. So again, thank you all. We'll be out there till June fourteenth this year, so come on out, enjoy it, and then, of course, back again Labor Day. And, uh, it's something that, uh, I was just counting in my head, we bring over six hundred feet, six hundred fifty people out there every Saturday, so it's, uh, it's another good use of the stadium, so a very, very good one. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council memo two thirty-six dash fourteen, a resolution approving an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for Phase Three of the Washington Street Over Spring Creek Improvement Project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo two thirty-seven dash fourteen, a resolution appropriating funds for Phase Three Engineering for the Washington Street Over Spring Creek Improvement Project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo two thirty-seven dash fourteen, a resolution appropriating funds for Phase Three Engineering for the Washington Street Over Spring Creek Improvement Project. It is recommended said resolution be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Krista.
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Before we move to bids and contracts, are we ready to vote on the council memo two twenty-seven dash fourteen?
Yes.
It was motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
I would just like to add that the folks were very grateful that we gave them a chance to get it settled in their minds, and, um, they wanted to thank the council, so I, I will vote aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, bids and contracts, award of contracts. Council memo two forty dash fourteen, purchase portable radios and accessories utilizing 2014 nine-one-one surcharge reallocation grant funds. Council memo two forty-one dash fourteen, award a contract for the 2014 sidewalk curb replacement project. Council memo two forty-two dash fourteen, award the 2014 spoils hauling contract. Council memo two forty-three dash fourteen, award a professional services agreement for the Phase Three Engineering Services for the Washington Street Over Spring Creek Improvement Project. It is recommended council memos two forty through two forty-three dash fourteen be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Amendments, change orders, and payments. Council memo two forty-four dash fourteen, approve amendment number one to the professional service agreement for the 2013 utilities east side GIS mapping project. Council memo two forty-five dash fourteen, approve change order number one for the 2013-2014 City of Joliet Landscape Maintenance Contract. Council memo two forty-six dash fourteen, approve change order number one for the new street, Osgood Street Utility Relocation Project. It is recommended council memos two forty-four through two forty-six dash fourteen be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Questions?
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Licenses and permit applications. Council memo two forty-seven dash fourteen was amended to read the issuance of a Class B liquor license at three-one-five-one Voyager Lane Anthony's Bar and Restaurant. It is recommended council memo two forty-seven dash fourteen be approved.
So all moved, and I'd like to thank the owners for amending their proposal.
Second.
Krista.
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye. Welcome back, Sammy.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Senator Mayor, the proclamation was previously presented. Mayor Gerani appointments. It is recommended Daniel Vera be appointed to the Will County Metropolitan Exposition and Auditorium Board.
So moved.
Second.
This motion is seconded to approve. Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman McFarland?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Odekirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gavin?
Aye.
Councilman Gurrell?
Aye.
Mayor Gerani?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Senator City Manager, presentation by Mike Ulytz and Jim Tyber for the 2014 Forestry Plan.
Mayor?
Yes.
As you know, uh, the city has faced the devastation of the Emerald Ash Bore, and, uh, along with that, uh, a number of trees throughout our community have died, and we need to address not only the removal of those, but also replanting. So I've been working with, uh, Mike Ulytz and, uh, Jim Tyber, our, uh, city forester, and like to, uh, allow them to do a presentation at this time.
All right. All right, Mayor, City Council, I'll make this fast. If you have questions on every page, please just go ahead and ask me questions as I go through this. Um, the first slide, it's kinda going over my, my goals as, uh, as a city forester, or city, our city forest. Uh, the main goal is the removal of these ash trees. The ash trees, right now, um, with our current budget, we're looking at, and staff helping us out, possibly ten years to remove all these ash trees. Um, that means there's gonna have a lot of standing trees around before we can get them down. Um, that's where we're at with our budget.
That, or and I, remove or replace, or just remove?
That's just remove.
Yeah, thank you.
So it's, we're looking at possibly ten years to get all these trees down. Um, without, uh, a true estimate of how many trees we have, we're estimating maybe eight to ten thousand ash trees. I believe that there are other communities that are, are a lot worse than we are. Um, we're probably around thirty percent ash tree population in the city of Joliet, and again, it could be a lot worse. Um, we do have certain subdivisions that are fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty percent, and they were hit hard, and, and we're gonna take care of those subdivisions first and then move our way on. Um, routine maintenance is probably second to the removal of the ash trees. Uh, we cannot put off the maintenance of our other trees that we have out there. We have to continue to maintain those trees and trim them, so we don't have hazards, we remove the hazards, we don't have situations in the future. Uh, the maintenance, there's zero funds, zero money in the budget for any maintenance whatsoever. I think five years ago, when times were great, every district had a certain amount of money that we spent on pruning these trees and keeping them maintained. We no longer do that. So our trees right now are not being maintained unless we do them in-house. So, in the long run, it's gonna cost us money because those trees are gonna continue to grow, continue to have larger limbs that are hanging out over the streets, over the sidewalks. Those branches have to be removed. Once they get larger, it costs us a lot of money, a lot more money to remove those branches at that time, instead of taking them out when they're earlier and younger. Um, so again, as of right now, there's, there's zero money, funding in the budget for the removal or for the trimming and maintenance. Um, inventory, we're working on inventory. That, again, that's probably runs right along with the routine tree maintenance. Uh, we have to know what we have out there. If, if we're unclear of what we have, we, we, we don't know the value of what it's gonna cost to maintain these trees or cut these trees or remove the trees. Um, and then tree planting and replacement. Uh, we have to get the trees down, um, but I think we also need to reforest some of these areas where we've lost, uh, substantial amount of ash trees. Uh, Warwick subdivision, eighty percent of those trees are gone. Um, there's, uh, Grand Prairie behind the mall, we removed forty percent of their trees. Um, there's a few other subdivisions they're working on now that we have contracted out. Uh, th- those, again, are forty to fifty percent ash. I believe we should get into some of these areas and reforest those areas, and then, again, move our way out and, and down, um, as the trees get smaller. Um, any questions in regards to removal of ash trees, where we're at, where our plans are? We're gonna start with the larger trees, which we've already done that, and then work our way down into the smaller ones. So some of the trees that are way out west or way out east are gonna be last. They're smaller, they're not a public safety issue at this time. We have to deal with the public safety trees first. The ones that are hazard, that are gonna come down, that could possibly hurt somebody or fall on cars or houses, we have to take care of those trees first, and then we'll work our way to the smaller trees. All right. Um, it's, and it's kinda how, leads into how we're responding to the situation. The city crews right now are removing any untreated trees. There are some treated trees that I have treated personally, and residents are treating. We are allowing them to treat their parkway trees if they feel they want to, with a permit, and so I know who's applying, what's applying, what's being applied, so I control what's going on, um, on our parkway trees. Uh, they are in-house, we're removing any tree that is fifteen inches and under. Um, I would have to say almost every other day, we have a crew out removing trees at this time, and stumping them out with our new stump grinder, so we are doing what we So we are doing what we can in-house, but as we all are, we're short staffed. So we can only do so much with what we have. Contractors are removing the larger trees. Again, that was, uh, was done in two thousand and eight when we first found out about the Emerald Ash Bore. I was proactive and got out there and started removing a lot of the larger trees in the Reed's Wood area, the Cathedral area. Most of those trees are now gone and removed. Some of those trees I did treat four or five years ago and we still remove those trees. They were in decline, they're to the point where we needed to take them out. There was root rot, there was curb damage, there was other issues. I felt that there was a need to get those trees out as soon as possible. That in the long run saved us money because now we don't have to worry about those larger trees. Contractors, we're putting them into neighborhoods where there's over fifty percent of the populations are ash. Our crews, we don't have the staff to go in there and take these trees down. We just can't do it. We don't have the equipment or the manpower to go in and remove two hundred trees in one shot. It would take us weeks and weeks to do it. Contractors are in there in a week, they're pulling in, they pull out and they're basically done besides some piles of wood chips and stuff that they will clean up. Planting, planting right now is limited. There are no funds for planting, grants are limited and any donated trees that we were getting are no longer. So it would be nice to get those grants back and some donated trees. We used to get trees from the racetrack, they didn't provide us with any of those trees this year. And the city crews, any trees that are donated or any grant trees that we do have, were planted by the city crews. We have an auger now that they can go out and actually attach to the bobcat and plant the trees ourselves, which saves us around a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars a tree to plant the trees in-house. We can only plant so many trees because we only have so many people. Budget, as of right now, my budget is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is not gonna get us far considering the amount of ash trees that we have out there and the trees that we have to replace to replenish our urban forest. A hundred and ten thousand dollars in a landscape maintenance contract. That contract is set up to basically cut the grass. We cut the grass, we maintain all the planting beds, mulch it, weed it. That's what the landscape maintenance contract consists of, oh, I'm sorry. They also do some trimming, they take care of infantry dry pond, all the planting bed areas. Comes out of that, comes out of that budget. Two hundred thousand dollars right now is set aside for the EAB, the hazard removal and the hazard trim. So if, you know, there's other maples, sycamores, other varieties of species of trees that we have to remove comes out of that budget also. And then we have forty thousand dollars set aside for other issues. We're proposing at this time to add to that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fall tree planting program. The estimated cost for those trees would be about three hundred dollars per tree, equaling about five hundred trees. And that would actually be the purchase and installation of the tree cost, which would be around three hundred dollars. But again, that's not part of the budget, that's something we'll bring to the city council and mayor later on. An example, Tinley Park, in this I contacted the contractor last week. They have committed this, I guess the contract is signed, one point five million dollars to take down eight to nine thousand Emerald Ash Bore or ash trees. That's anywhere from four inches up to whatever forty or fifty inch size tree. The cost came in a lot lower than they estimated, which was great. The costs are coming down for the removal of these trees. They're trying to compete with all the salespeople out there trying to sell treatment options. So the prices are coming down, which is allowing communities to go in and actually remove their trees at a lower cost and then have money to replant these areas. So, but as you can see, say if we did have eight to nine thousand dollars, eight to nine thousand trees, it would cost us around one point five million dollars to remove all these trees.
Jim, would that be done like in one season, one summer?
That, I'm not even sure if it says, I think it's one season is what I heard from Homer Tree. So then it's, it's done, it's over, they're gone and then we can start from scratch. But that's what they're doing. I think they're one of the only cities that has, there's other ones, Ottawa, I know they removed others, but they got a lot of grief from, uh, from residents. But once these trees start to decline to the point that they're at right now, there's no use to try to treat them. I know Chicago, it was on TV the last couple of days where they're out treating thirty something thousand ash trees. They have to be as, as far into this thing as we are with the amount of Emerald Ash Bore trees, infested trees, the percentage that are actually infested. You're not supposed to treat a tree that's over fifty percent. I would have to say the majority of their trees are over fifty percent. Why they're spending a million dollars, one point five or whatever is a year or every two years to treat these trees in Chicago, you got me. And then they're using money also to replace some of these trees. Naperville signed up on a contract to treat their trees. That was to prolong their actual removal of these trees, knowing that they were eventually gonna take them down. They were hoping that they could just prolong it and then eventually go and remove them. So they're spending seven hundred thousand dollars every two years to treat their trees, but planning on removing those trees down the road because of the Emerald Ash Bore. So that's just an example, some are interns.
Jim, so what you're saying, let's put it in simpler terms, is a program like Naperville's, they're essentially putting the trees on life support to try to buy some time.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. And they're also replanting though, they are spending thousands to replant trees. So they're doing a little bit of both and they're removing trees.
Jim, I do have a couple of questions. Do we have any idea how many trees are in Joliet? Okay, number two, are residents calling and, because I know we don't have a total inventory, are they calling and letting you know the larger trees that are infected?
Most of the calls that are coming in now are smaller trees. I'm driving around the Reed's Wood areas and the Cathedral areas, I'm doing my best to mark all these trees.
Should residents call you if they have a big ash?
If they have a big ash tree in the parkway, please call me.
Is there a number that we can put on the screen so they can call?
Yeah, my cellphone number, actually.
Okay, and then also, how big are these trees that we're gonna purchase to replace? Or what can an individual homeowner do to get in on that? Can we buy bulk so it'd be cheaper and how big would that tree be?
I was gonna get into that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, let me, let me, the tree size, I'll just answer that, are two to two, two to two and a half inch trees. And the reason for that is because our parkways are narrow. We cannot put in a three to four, five inch parkway tree. We're gonna have to start small and, and work our way back up again. We're really limited with the amount of space. We used to have a lot wider parkways, but now that we've opened our streets up and basically took away from the parkway, we're kind of limiting ourself to where we can and cannot plant trees. And the size of trees, the root balls on a two inch tree are twenty-three inches in diameter by nurseryman standards. If you get up to a two and a half to three, you're looking at twenty-eight to thirty-two inch and.
How tall are they?
Uh, anywhere from six to ten feet.
Thank you.
Yep. Inventory, again, it's, it's a, it's a big concern of mine. It's something that I've been pushing for years. I've been here eighteen years now, we still do not have an official inventory. I know way back when they tried to do an inventory of the Reed's Wood area, the Cathedral area, I don't even have that paperwork. I know they tag trees, but it was all paper then, so that's, you know, what happens to paper. It gets misplaced and we no longer have that, so. But now everything is.
Save a tree, that's why.
Yeah, well, that's good, but, yeah. Now everything is GIS based and it's all in the software. Davy has a great program, we go out, we do a complete inventory. If we can get the students or summer interns to do this, and I think it's the only really way to go to save money, is to go out and inventory sections of the city. Complete inventory is you inventory every tree, you give it a condition class, the condition of the tree, the tree should be trimmed, the pruned, removed, if it's a hazard. If there's an open site where there's available site to plant a tree, all that stuff is included on the inventory. That is what a complete inventory is, they don't drive by them and do them, they actually go from house to house to house. You have a, your iPhone or your, your Android phone and the program is right on your phone. So you don't have to have the little computer anymore, you can walk around and do everything on your phone. And everything is loaded into the, the software and it'll, it'll print out the, the cost of the trees, what those trees are worth, what it saves the city every year. That's kind of what gets into the next page. A sample inventory will go over, if you have two hundred thousand trees, it saves the city seventeen million dollars a year. That's due to the air quality, the climate, the carbon dioxide, the water runoff, the stormwater runoff, the shaded streets. If all our streets were shaded, we would not have to go back and resurface these streets. It feels like we're doing it every couple of years. But it's proven and, and this stuff works and that's why they have this cost estimate and what it costs or what the cost savings is to have all these trees in an urban forest. This was a program that, again, Davy came up with and most communities, a lot of cities are going with this program. And this is how they're inventorying their trees. Any questions on the inventory?
I do, this is maybe for Mr. Hock. Did we not approve at the last meeting a couple forestry interns to do this?
Yes, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year allocated towards the purchase of the software. And we were looking to hire four interns for the position, for going out and doing this tree inventory, trying to work with Joliet Junior College or any of the colleges that has a horticulture program. At this time, we've not had much success in, in our recruitment. And if, if we don't in the very near future, we may come back to you and, and suggest that we contract out, maybe with Davy who's, has, I don't know if they're sole source provider because it's software program they've devised and have them do the tree inventory for us. Rather than, because if we can't get it moving this year, I don't think we can afford to wait and, and put the cart before the horse. We need, we need that inventory in place before we can really implement a, a appropriate forestry and, and maintenance program.
There are other companies, Davy can supply the software and we could set a bid out there to get, you know, Homer Tree Service, ArborTech, Davy, Davy, there's other companies out there that will, will bid on these. So the cost will probably be lower than Davy, truthfully, believe it or not, but it all depends on the company. And the inventory, if we're gonna replant trees, thousands of trees, we need to inventory those trees. You know, that was a mistake that was made in the past is right now we wouldn't have to really, we'd have an inventory if all the trees were going in and, at that time, and we kept an inventory. But things were moving so fast, it was just, it just, you know, got kind of out of control and it was great. Trees were going in and a lot of ash trees were going in, so.
Well, I had a question. Hock, what, what, you said we're having a little difficulty recruiting. Nobody's interested or we can't find qualified interns?
We haven't had any applicants at this point. We've been recruiting for over two months, trying to work with.
And those are just to do the inventory?
Right.
Just to go out and tag trees, basically?
To find qualified individuals that can go out and ID trees. Believe it or not, Juco has a great program and I'm sure they have students that are capable of doing this. But they probably have those jobs or their jobs locked up, you know, mid, midway through their year. So it's something that if maybe this year we say, all right, let's, let's hire a company to come in at five dollars a site to do inventory, keep it limited. And then next year, get out there as early as we possibly can and start recruiting and find individuals that can do the inventory.
I see Bob Wonderlick out there, can't you find us some?
Your Honor, I'm down on Deer Street, probably got a thousand trees in there, liquid eight. I'd love to have Jim come out, it's not fifty-five.
All right.
And some trees are too big, even some you might not want, but whatever you want, you guys pay.
That's great.
That's great.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, any other inventory questions? All right, I guess then we get into the planting, so Jan, if you have any questions. Contract growing is one of the things that I've been. I guess the disadvantages, time is limited when it comes down. Like I think the new way of a contract going, I've been at a few conferences where everyone's, not everyone, but it's been mentioned that it's a lot easier for nurseries to, to purchase these trees, to get it from their growers and then put them in their nurseries and grow them for certain municipalities or certain jobs. And again, I think this is how communities are gonna go, but as, as usual, prices go up. When people jump on board, prices are gonna skyrocket. The species, the species are limited to the grower. And again, that is one of the reasons why we have to get in there and start this, start this early. Let me get into the advantages. There's not a whole lot of disadvantage of the contract growing besides needing to get, get in there and, and sign the contract and, and get started. Usually a contract growing, it could be anywhere from two years to what I'm, what I wanna propose and, and the city manager and wants to propose later on is more like a seven-year contract. We would split the money out, we'd start out at a certain fund and then in seven years, that would add up to around forty-two, I think forty-two hundred trees if we get it at the price that we're thinking we can get it at.
It would behoove us to do that because the longer you wait, the trees are gonna get scarce because everybody's buying them. So if you can, if you can tie up a contract at a price, yeah.
Every nursery right now is just limited to what they have supply, they're not gonna, it's like everything else. They're not going to go out and purchase and plant all these trees because the development's not there. So they're not gonna get stuck with all this material like they were when the development went under. So they're going to, the growers are gonna grow a limited amount of supplies of certain species and all trees. And then the people who we buy from the nurseries, the nurseries buy from the growers, the nurseries are gonna buy limited stock, so they're gonna have limited availability. So you're not gonna have a diversified list. If you do it the contract growing way, you specify exactly what trees you want to grow. And, and then the growers, they get them from the growers and then the nursery grows those trees for that specific city or job site, whoever the contract is under. And those trees that we choose are specifically for us and for nobody else at a set price. So if you do it now, seven years down the road, that tree that was a hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks is that same price seven years down the road. So a tree that is two hundred dollars right now, at our cost would be a hundred dollars if you do a contract growing. Maybe the prices might go up, could be up now, we just, we really don't know. There might be a twenty-five percent saving or there could be a fifty percent savings. It, it's hard to say because the prices are gonna fluctuate.
Quick question. Jim, I've talked to you about that before too and, and I think I've talked to yourself, you too, Jim Tyburn, Jim. How close are we to actually getting an active seven-year program? Because it just, I hope we're close. You know, when, when do you think you can bring it back, in a matter of a month or so? That we can get this done? Because it's kind of interesting, we just talked about we couldn't get the appropriate interns because we waited too long to try to hire them and they've already hired out. That wasn't a problem, that wasn't a mistake, that was just, I don't wanna see us do it with this because I, I know and what I've learned about this, that, yeah, this, I think you've alluded to that, Jim, the sooner the other cities start jumping on, supply and demand. You'd rather be the first one on, not the tenth or the hundredth.
So, so basically what we're proposing to you and will be proposing is a budget adjustment. They add a hundred and fifty thousand to this year's budget for the purchase of up to five hundred trees to replace those that we've had to cut down. And then in the fall, we'll be making a recommendation on either a nursery type of program or, as you see in this current slide, there is a zero percent loan through the Illinois Finance Authority for up to twenty years and that's strictly for planting new trees due to Emerald Ash Bore. That would, and it's not for the removal. So that would free up our current budget to dedicate strictly to the removal and we could borrow, I don't know how many, you know, a million or two million dollars and, and jump on it right now and get those trees planted in the next couple of three years. And because it's free money, I mean, it's zero percent loan with a twenty-year, up to twenty-year repayment plan. And, and you have to think, once they're in the ground, that could be ten years or fifteen years of new growth for that tree versus budgeting annually for four or five hundred trees. So that's what we wanna take a look at and make a recommendation to you September, October.
The reason I asked a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that you wanna budget for a purchase for the single year, I think you said, right? Is that gonna be at contract growing prices or is that gonna be at a higher price that we're buying them?
I'm sorry?
Is that gonna be at contract growing price, you know, prices or at standard prices? That we're gonna be buying it with that hundred and fifty?
We're part of, we'll take a look at what the market's offering. We're part of a consortium, municipal purchasing consortium and typically get the, the best price through them. We wanna make sure that that kind of quantity is available and what those rates are and get as many trees as we can for the hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Jan?
Jim, you said tree species available guaranteed. Now, back in the seventies, we suffered from Dutch elm disease and now we have the Emerald Ash Bore. How do we know, is there any particular tree that would be acclimated to our climate that we won't have to go through this again, say in thirty years, or there's just no?
Just diversify your tree species, don't plant more than twenty percent.
They said that about the ash tree.
Yeah, well, that's what happened, I know.
Right, the ash tree was a foreign invader is basically what killed it. It wasn't, it wasn't our climate, it was the.
Those darn bugs.
Yeah.
They're everywhere.
Yeah, there's nothing you can do, the ginkgo is the only tree that is disease and pest resistant.
And they're probably quite expensive.
Yeah, they're about, yeah, we're right now at a two to two and a half inch ginkgo from the nurseries going anywhere from two hundred to two fifty.
So what tree are they recommending that we purchase?
Well, I mean, I do have a list on here, but it's hard to read.
I got maple trees planted all over the yard we gotta dig up because they just.
Well, that's one, it's one tree that I'm not recommending right now.
I know, they're free.
Well, we're overplanting maples, so, and you have, there are pests and a lot of diseases that do kill maples. And we've lost a lot of maples due to verticillium wilt and other, other funguses. The Asian Longhorn Beetle up in Chicago is killing a lot of maples. And they've got a control over it, but they seem to find it again here and there. I mean, there's a whole list of trees on my approved tree list and I can give you this list that I have. I made up a list of what my, if I, if we did a contract growing, this is what I would recommend purchasing, which is a huge variety of different species of trees.
Can you, is this up on our website?
No.
Can you put this up on our website so people, homeowners that wanna buy a tree, they'll know what type of tree to purchase?
We have an approved page on the website already and most of these trees are on there. I would have to say probably ninety percent of them are on there already, not this specific sheet, but.
But do you want, I think we can do a special icon for you on our website so people can go right to that and, you know, look up the trees and see what they have in their yard and maybe they can help in some way. Because I know people, you know, some want trees and some can afford them and some cannot and this would probably be a, a good guide for them to go buy.
Well, if they want trees in the parkway, what we do is they have to get a permit. There's no cost for the permit.
Talking about their yards too, though.
Well, in their yards, yeah, if they wanna call me and ask me, that's not a problem.
You wanna give us your numbers so that they can put it up later so people can call you?
The office number is eight one five seven two four four oh four six. It went from forty phone calls a week to eighty.
I know, I know, but you know what, Jim, I wanna thank you. You've been working really hard on this and you know your trees and I know you tried to prevent this, but it's the better of all of us, but thank you for all your hard work.
But I, even if we did a one-year contract, I think it's a good thing. I think anything we can do to start planting trees, initially just jump on, just, all right, let's, let's see what we can do with a one-year contract, let's see what kind of prices we can get, let's see what's available, let's see what's out there. It's hard to say what's available and what we can, what, what's there, so it's a start.
Jim Hock, if we followed your proposal and borrowed the money from the Finance Authority, which makes sense at zero percent, how much would we be able to cut into the ten-year removal estimation that we got tonight? Is there any idea on that?
No, and that's part of the reason why we need that inventory complete. We don't even know how many ash trees are out there. We've been, we've got a good idea, but we don't have that inventory. In, in any case, we, as Jim mentioned, it's been better than five years that we haven't been doing any trimming, any planting. And, and we've just been doing hazardous removal. And I think as a city this size with over two hundred thousand trees, we need to rededicate some of our monies towards tree replacement because it's one of the things that I think residents really appreciate.
I agree, thank you.
Three questions and then we can move on. First thing is the, this is the third time we've had a presentation on Emerald Ash since I've been elected about a year ago. So I wanna thank you for bringing this to the forefront again. I know we did it in, I believe, land use committee and then had a full council meeting. So whatever we could do to expedite this, because I cannot tell you how many calls I refer to, to Jim in a community meetings or residents talking about it, wanting trees removed. And then of course, people are financially tight and they can't afford the fifty-fifty program. So whatever we could do to expedite this, I would appreciate that. The second question I have is you mentioned a couple of times in each of the presentations that we basically allowed for these plantings to go rogue. One is, do we need to update our current ordinances to specify that we only allow twenty percent subdivision? And two is, we approved this evening for riling homes, for new homes going to subdivision. Who's policing that? I mean, evidently the city did not police.
In the past, it wasn't, it wasn't policed by me or Don Fisher when, because he, before eighteen, well, I've been eighteen years now. So before me, Don would kind of oversee it. The engineers oversee, oversaw all that work, so.
Are we gonna make sure this doesn't happen again? I mean, I think we should all ask for reassurance.
Those trees that they are installing, again, that's why we want this Davy software, that should be part of the contract. They should have to submit that information into the Davy software. Every location, every tree should be tagged, species, names, whatever, where they're at should all go into that GIS system as they're being installed. That should be part of the, the contract so we can control what's going in and what's, what's being planted out there. But it all should be documented, yes, of course. It would, it would solve a lot of problems, but it will solve problems in the future if we can start it now.
So is this maybe for corporate councils, is it too late to implement this with this new subdivision going in or?
Well, if the arborist has recommendations on enhancing our administrative controls and then we can certainly do that and amend our subdivision regulations. But a few years ago, we did adopt an ordinance requiring the submission of a landscaping plan where a developer, whether it be a residential subdivider or a commercial developer, had to submit a landscaping plan that would show all the plantings. We do have a species diversification requirement. We already have a, a list of approved species. I think what Jim's talking about is at the time of original planting, trying at that point.
point, to have the, the developer help us with creation of the inventory. I don't believe we have that requirement now, other than the submittal of a landscape plan. Now, if Jim wanted to say to our developers, your landscaping plan needs to be submitted in an electronic format, and here's the authorized format, so it's compatible with Davies or compatible with a GIS system, we could do that. We're already set, I think, to do that.
Because if we don't implement something like this, we're getting, we're going to be the same problem, correct? Developer puts the trees in, and then now we're going back with taxpayer monies to remove them and replant them?
Well, I think what Jim is saying is, control Mother Nature, and all your trees over time will be at risk, so mix them up, and so you don't lose them all or a significant amount at one time.
Yeah, there is a submitted plan, landscape plan initially before, it has to get approved. Now, I, I think we're, we're getting those lists, when I, I haven't seen a list, but I, I should see a list before those trees get approved, and then, but, I can't remember if you had a question before that?
That's it.
All right.
Are you, are you through? I'm going to suggest it. I don't know how long this zero-interest money is going to be available, so let's take advantage of it while it's there before it dries up and come up with a, a plan if we have to go out five years, seven years, and get the money to do it, let's, let's, as soon as possible, before it dries up.
Okay. I have one more question before we end this, sorry. Jim, what is the certification needed to identify these trees if we can't get interns? Because there's so many environmental groups out there...
There's a lot of groups, and I'm going to talk to Rita.
Can we get some volunteers, maybe, to help you with that?
We mentioned that today in our pre-meeting, that we would work, I would work on that. There are a lot of volunteers that would be more than willing to come out, so I'm going to work on that.
And, and just, you know, ordinary citizens, what, is there something we can put up on the website as well, what to look for so they can identify the diseased trees? I mean, the really bad ones have lots of holes, and I'm going to have them...
Within the next, within the next year and a half, by next year, I would have to say that at least ninety percent of our ash tree populations will be totally dead. You will not be able to miss the, the trees, or have to worry about IDing them. We're going to see a lot of it this year. This is a year where really...
I'm just trying to give you some help.
Yeah, no, I know, I know, and that's, in, in the inventory, we're inventorying them as we're taking them down. It'd be great to just have the money to go out and say, all right, hire a company, go out, and let's get the inventory done right now. It would take them, you know, a, a month or something, we'd have the answers for us, but that would cost us probably six or seven-hundred thousand dollars at least. And I am, I'm going to contact some groups, at least go out and, and start inventorying certain subdivisions. I can get hold of HOAs, and maybe they have individuals there that can ID trees, and they can specifically do their areas, which would help out a great deal.
I think it's a good idea.
Yep.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, Jim?
Next is the review of proposed police command structure.
I want to just review a restructuring proposal that was made to me by Chief Benton. This goes back some months, but I wanted us to get through our strategic planning process, and I promised the chief I'd present it to you as soon as we get into the finishing details of our strategic plan, so this is before you tonight, and the chief is off as, at a training program, so he is unavailable this evening. So I just want to run through it and, and ask you to defer your specific questions to possibly the next meeting when he'll, he'll be here in attendance. So what you've got on the screen before you is the current organizational chart, goes a little bit deeper than what you see in the memo in front of you, and the point of this, the chief is proposing this to create a flatter structure that'll allow for more effective communication within the organization, provide clear lines of control and responsibility, and will also provide for a broader pool of qualified candidates eventually to potentially assume the, the role of chief. There were several areas that were identified that need attention, primarily including the reorganization to allow for decision-making authority and realignment of the internal divisions to make the department more effective, and I'll show you the, again, a little more detail of, of how that would work. So what is proposed, in essence, is to eliminate the commander position and change it to deputy chief, so you would have four deputy chiefs in the department. One would be administration, responsible for administrative duties such as personnel and discipline, budget preparation, internal affairs, and policy management. Technical services would include the communications center, record section, special projects, and information technology-related projects. Operations would be all uniform personnel, such as patrol, neighborhood policing, special services, and, and traffic. And then investigations, of course, would address all major crimes, including the evidence section and detached units such as the Metropolitan Area Narcotics Squad, Cooperative Police Assistance Team, and the Federal Bureau of Investigations Task Forces. Excuse me. The other thing is that traditionally, the deputy chief position has served as, as backup for the chief, filling the need for addressing administrative hearings, community civic engagements, and contract negotiations. This will give the opportunity and exposure for the deputy chiefs in the four divisions to fill in for the chief. Oftentimes, he's got conflicts for neighborhood groups and various civic organizations, and these deputy chiefs can fill in for that. So at this point in time, I am recommending this reorganization change from division commander position to four deputy chiefs, and compensation will be addressed and presented at the next Finance Commission for their, for their review.
Thanks, Jim.
So I have one other item that I just wanted to present to you very briefly this evening, and that's the preservation of Silver Cross Stadium. As you know, Silver Cross is a, is a community asset that's now thirteen years old. There have been underinvestment in, in the required maintenance, and there were some design flaws, which have tried to be addressed over the years but are now coming to the surface. If we don't address these, they can create safety hazards and obviously affect the life of, of this important community asset. This year, we had a problem. It was a safety issue. The freezer, the beer cooler floors warped due to condensation from the concrete, and for some reason, there was wood under there, and that wood, wood absorbed moisture, twisted, turned, and actually tore the metal base of the actual freezer. So that had to be cut out and replaced. There's some other obsolete equipment, the, there are two hot water heaters that had to be replaced, and there's HVAC components right now that, that need to be replaced even this season. I've got a photo up here of an immediate concern. The backstop netting is being held together by zip tie locks, and, and even, you can even see there's still a hole. Hopefully, they got those zip ties in here before the opening game this last weekend. But there's something, we have not budgeted any money this year in, in our current budget, and the hope is, I will be making a recommendation of at least this amount of money to replace this netting. They're going to have a concert on the thirteenth, fourteenth of August, and so they'll be dropping down this netting for viewing the concert, and then they want to be able to put up the new netting at that time, so that'll save on labor costs. A much more severe problem is the stadium concrete is, are basically pre-cast concrete that have been moved into place with a crane, and then there are seams that are sealed. And from day one, the, the, it has been leaking at the seam underneath, in the concourse underneath home plate to first base, and as a result, you can see the leaking along the concrete pier, but underneath there is a totally rusted-out electrical conduit that needs to be replaced. Now, this is a potentially much more expensive project, and I will be recommending that we hire a, a structural engineer with expertise in, in bridges or big projects like this to come in and evaluate what the corrective measure is before we make any kind of budget recommendation to you. Secondary concerns are the winterization of the offices during the off-season. There's, the way that it's designed, it's, it's really not an efficient situation, so we need to work with the slammers on that issue. Again, I've mentioned the repair of the first, first base concourse. Long-term issues, outfield grass replacement, just to give you an idea, costs eighty thousand dollars. The scoreboard out there right now runs on Microsoft Five, and nobody knows how to repair it, so, but it's such a huge expenditure that that may be something that we look at in term, with the naming rights which may be coming up, which would be coming up in the next few years. So the other thing is, is we have annual revenue, but we've not had any annual expenditures, and I think it's a neglected area that we need to include in, in not only this year's, but you'll see proposals from me in future years' budgets.
Question, Mayor?
Yes.
Jim, the annual revenue you referred to, if we were to budget the annual revenue from the ballpark for these repairs, would it cover them on a yearly basis?
I don't know the answer to that. We've, we will, we have expected revenue of fifty thousand this year and seventy-five thousand the next two years in rent, and then we get a portion of ticket sales if it exceeds a certain value. So I, so I don't know the answer to your question, but I do think that if we work with the, the slammers owners and, and the, the maintenance personnel and get in there and, and evaluate it, we can plan ahead and, and determine how, how much we need to spend each year.
Would there be any shared cost with the tenant in this case, the slammer?
Well, we do, the agreement we have right now, if it's a typical maintenance kind of thing, they're responsible for that kind of upkeep, but if it's a, a hard, physical asset, that's our responsibility, so. Something we'll clarify with them.
Wait a minute.
Jim, just a quick question. I think it's pretty known that I don't like the city to, to own a lot of assets. We had the debate about the, the ice cream parlor that we own on Broadway Street and the lack of rent for a couple of years, and now the budget cost to, to update the maintenance of it, and I think our finance department's going to finally look to see if the revenue outweigh the cost of us owning and operating it. But I'd like to seriously take a look, I know, I don't know if it's been a year or two years past that the city invested a, a large amount of money, I think it was near three-hundred-some-oh-thousand dollars, to do some infrastructure changes with the exterior heating, I believe going outside, coming in, and whatnot. Can we look to see if potentially the city could sell the ball-diamond? Is there a way that maybe the slammers or just put it out there, get it appraised, and see if some private developers interested in purchasing it? I know the city had an opportunity to partner with the high school, and that didn't pan out, and I think that would have helped out a little bit with the, the turf, grass, and whatnot that we, we discussed previously, but I just see that we can no longer afford, in my opinion, to keep throwing money in there, and there's no really positive revenue coming back to the city. It's a great asset. We talked a little bit about the, the prison last night, and another asset that might need some investment money, but can we at least look at potentially selling this to a private developer? Might sit on the market, not sell, but I mean...
Well, that's true. It's, it's an asset that maybe nobody will want. There's, the reason that cities, and coming from Michigan, all of my career, I've had Parks and Recreation Department as a city service. There is no Parks District. Every swimming pool, every ice arena, every golf course loses money, and it, it's a city service, just like plowing the streets. You have to decide as a policy whether or not it's a cultural asset that you want to provide to the community, and in essence, subsidizing it or, or, you know, spending money for capital expenditures, just like we do our streets, is, is something that is a responsibility that Park Districts and, and cities in Michigan have determined that, yes, we want to provide these recreational opportunities and cultural opportunities to our residents, but it's, it is something that you can decide to say, hey, it's an, it's an asset that we don't want to operate anymore, and maybe somebody else can operate it better and, and make money on it, so it's something we can certainly explore if that's what the majority of council wants to do.
Thank you.
Jim, just one question there. Going back to the structural integrity of the building, you, how soon will we be able to get someone out there to take a look at that? I mean, the season's started, we've got, even if it's going...
Right. Well, any kind of fix for that would probably be something that would be done at the end of the season, because potentially, you may have to remove some of the stands to get access to, to caulk that seam, but certainly during the summertime, we can get somebody out there to do an examination of it, create a report for us. Then, then with that report, we know exactly what the fix is, and we can go to bid and find out what kind of expense that would be.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks.
Next is new business, not for final action or recommendation, the review of the prohibited uses in the agreement with Impact Outdoor LLC for the video panels advertisement throughout the city.
Mayor, as I mentioned last night to you all, Councilman Hug had requested that this go to the, to committee, and the, it was the land use, I believe, and Land Use Committee could not reach a decision and ask that this be placed as new business on a future agenda, and the issue has to do with the fact that a company who provides concealed handgun training to residents now in Illinois, where it is, the Supreme Court has ruled that the state has to allow that, and there's a provision under item C on page five of prohibited uses, that in order to avoid inadvertent suggestion of city endorsement or opposition, they can't be used for the display or promotion or advertisement of political candidates, political action committees, political parties, public questions or issues of recognized political or social debate, such as abortion, gun control, immigration, war, or matters involving the sexual orientation. The provider, the, Impact, the company that we have the agreement with, Impact Outdoors, made the determination that this was a violation of this prohibited use to allow that kind of advertising, and denied the company the ability to advertise on the billboards. And so the question is before you as to whether or not the intent of this language was to prohibit that kind of advertising.
I'll start. I know I got a couple emails today about the legality, it was questioned in, I think, Arizona, and I believe, Jeff, you talked to their attorney, what, what transpired out of that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I did receive a phone call from an attorney for, I believe, the Illinois Rifle Association, directing to my attention a, a recent decision of the Arizona, in Arizona court, not a federal court, in Arizona court... of the Arizona, in Arizona court, not a federal court, in Arizona court, where there was a dispute concerning the public ad, public advertising on, I believe it was buses, or bus, not buses, but...
Oh, it was, I think it was buses.
Bus shelters, and it was the advertising policy of a transit agency, and it was bus shelters, and I think buses too. And the, the decision was very interesting in that it kind of encapsulated the federal law on First Amendment issues, even though this was a state court decision. And, and I thank the association for giving me that case, although when I was done reviewing it, I thought that it really didn't apply to our fact situation, it applied more closely to what was happening in Arizona. Basically, the situation we're in is, even though the discussion originated in the context of firearms and weapons training and concealed carry, which most people recognize as a Second Amendment issue, really the law has less to do with the Second Amendment and more to do with the First Amendment, which is what is the government's right to restrict the content of speech in advertisement? And generally, people recognize the First Amendment as giving people the right to speak freely on a subject and, more importantly, restricting the government's ability to regulate the content of speech. And that's the First Amendment issue, that's what this case ultimately dealt with, although not in a way that applies to our situation. And, and the way I view this matter is, we're in Joliet, forget Arizona for the moment, we're not talking about bus shelters, we're not talking about ads on buses, we're talking about entry monument signs in Joliet where these are structures, pretty nicely landscaped, substantial structures that essentially are "Welcome to Joliet" type of signs. And they're community hospitality type of signs. And a few years ago, a decision was made by the council, and there was some discussion, and a little bit of staff discussion on this point as well, but a decision was made to try to incorporate into these entry monument signs some technology that would allow video display terminals to be installed within, within these monuments that the community could benefit from. And the most common example was being able to use the video displays for Amber Alerts. If there is a lost or kidnapped child, you could have pretty much instantaneous law enforcement communication with the public regarding that incident. And so a decision was made at that, try to upgrade the technology and usefulness of our entry monument signage to include these video displays. At the same time, I think a decision was made to partner with the private sector because the city was not willing to make that investment in that technology with its own resources. And so the city partnered with a private company that's engaged in the outdoor advertising business, and the arrangement essentially was that this company would pay for the purchase of that equipment, install the equipment, and, and, and share the use of the equipment with the public. Many of, people today are familiar with electronic digital advertising where the message will rotate after 20 seconds or so, and, and that's what these signs do. And, and so the, the arrangement was that the public, the city in this case, would have the right to use the signs for a certain number of rotations, so that, for community messaging. So if there was an event at Bicentennial Park, or we were going to have a parade in downtown Joliet, the city could promote that community event on our entry monument signage. And then we could also use that signage for the Amber Alert or other emergency communications. In fact, the Amber Alerts and the emergency communication preempt the commercial advertising that appears on the sign, and the city actually has the ability to take over control of that sign for the purpose of that public safety emergency. So that's what it was, it was a public-private partnership to take an entry monument sign and provide some other public benefit. And the trade-off we made was because we didn't have the money to provide that technology, we had to go to the private sector for it, and so we had to make some allowance for private sector use of that sign. And, and that's how we find ourselves in today's situation. We've, we've entered into a business arrangement with a billboard company. That billboard company sells inventory, that inventory is the rotation on these various signs. But because it was Joliet property that was at issue, and, and more importantly, it isn't just any property, but it's hospitality property, it's "Welcome to Joliet" type of property. The decision was made to limit how commercial advertising could appear on those signs. And I think the consensus was that whatever commercial advertising we were going to allow on that sign, that it would have to be apolitical and non-controversial. And, and under the law, under First Amendment law, a city can do that. A city does not have to make all of its property available for public First Amendment purposes on an unrestricted basis. There are Supreme Court cases that do give the city the right to limit the use of its property in a way that prevents the establishment of what the courts call a public forum. And, and that's what we did here. So, there have been cases that have gone to the Supreme Court that allow a city, in, cases where the property is, is unique in some way, in here in Entry Monument, for example. So long as we don't permit one viewpoint on a subject, right, and encourage a single viewpoint, but prohibit the opposite viewpoint or a different viewpoint, as long as we are not granting a preference to one viewpoint or another on a given subject, then the courts will allow a city to sidestep controversy if it decides it does not want to create a, a new limited public forum for a unique and special type of property. And that's what we have here. This is a "Welcome to Joliet" sign. So this is the type of situation where the city has the most authority that it ever will have, in my opinion, when it comes to free speech issues. So, for me, the issue isn't can the city restrict commercial advertising and avoid controversial subjects? The courts say, yes, you can do that. The question is, does the council feel that the current arrangement properly lays out those subjects? And should we modify the types of subjects we view as controversial? So we, we do have the authority to make these signs pretty vanilla and non-controversial. The issue, I believe, should be what are those lists? And, and does the current agreement encompass the full body of the type of subjects we don't think would be appropriate for a "Welcome to Joliet" type of sign? So, that was a long explanation. These are hard legal issues. Courts, judges, lawyers, advocates disagree every day on First Amendment issues. And I do want to thank the association for sending me the Arizona case because it was a 2014 summary of the most recent law, and I found it very helpful.
Thank you. Comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start, because it was brought to my attention by, by the company that wanted to advertise, and I, and I thank you for the explanation, Jeff. It's really, for me, it was, it's not a legal matter, it's a clarification by the council. He wants to advertise the state-required concealed carry classes. You know, without getting, I'm not going to get into a, certainly not with you, Jeff, a First Amendment debate, that's not my point. What we prohibit when it comes to firearms is firearms and ammunition. He doesn't want to, you know, he's not going to be advertising a Glock or what type of ammunition, ammunition he has. What he, what he came to me, what he said is he had actually bought the space, bought the time and space on the monuments, and it was supposed to be paid, the company, and that the company then didn't run it on the first day when he went by to see it, it wasn't in the rotation, and the company said the city had said it's not allowed under the ordinance. So, there's some discrepancy there. But what we need to clarify is, since the Supreme Court ordered Illinois to allow for concealed carry, it's no longer controversial, it's the law. Since Illinois responded to that demand from the Supreme Court and created a requirement for the concealed carry classes, I don't see that as controversial, it's the law. I, I don't think that eliminating firearms and ammunition would extend to the classes. Kind of a loose example or comparison, if for some reason we decided to eliminate, so that's why we need clarity, to eliminate the advertisement or the sales of cars, we'd still be able to advertise those places that offer driving courses. We certainly, I would think, and we haven't gotten there yet, but if a place like Juco offered a firearms safety class and FOIA class, we'd allow that to be advertised. So I think he's got a legitimate point, the owner of this particular company, that our description of prohibitions on firearms is firearms, okay, guns of any type, any type. And, he's not challenging that prohibition. And ammunition, those projectiles that will go on the guns, and he's not challenging that prohibition. He's saying, I was trying to advertise a class that's federally and state-mandated. Not controversial, it's mandated, we have to offer this, the state has to respond, and I think that's what needs to be clarified by this council, that he should be allowed to advertise as classes, not as guns, not as ammunition, but as classes.
Anybody else? John?
Mayor, I was going to say, Donald Moran, he's the president of the Illinois State Rifle Association, is here with us tonight. Mr. Moran, I don't know if you wanted to make a comment with respect to this issue?
Good evening, councilman mayor. Our issue, I guess, on this thing is, I just came here to listen mostly this evening. I'm a lifelong Joliet resident, and I live in Romeoville, serve on Will County Board. But I came to listen to hear what you had to say, and I think that this thing really relates to training. You know, we sued the state of Illinois, we sued the Attorney General in the state of Illinois to get a concealed carry law passed in the state of Illinois. The legislature responded, they require 16 hours of training. Our organization is a 501(c)(4) educational organization, not-for-profit, we believe in training. And this really comes down to, if people are allowed to own firearms, should they have training related to that? And this is, this person's trying to provide training to people, he's trying to do a public service by allowing that training. And I think it's just, it's not a good practice, I think, to not allow it, that's my opinion. Okay, and then we'll, we'll, I'll sit down, I'll listen to your debate, and, and I'm sure we'll have more conversations about it later. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, I, you know, people, you're probably going to ask what I was... John Sheridan, 1122 North Center Street. First, my sincere condolences on the loss of your mother. It's tough, no matter what age, but I'm certainly sure you have some fond memories to help fill that void, and I want to say that tonight. City council about a couple weeks ago, a couple meetings ago, passed an ordinance to allow medical marijuana dispensary in the city. That was another law, controversial law, that was passed by the state of Illinois. I totally support it for, for obvious reasons it was passed. Also, last week, the zoning board approved the location in Joliet with certain stipulations and so on. So I guess when, this is a non, not for final action tonight, but I think in, in your debates, you need to take in consideration what I've just talked about, and would you allow that company to advertise in a billboard, this rotating billboard, about their location for medical marijuana dispensary? And that's certainly something that could be done. Welcome to the city, you know, medical marijuana dispensary, stop at Rock Run, you know, so freedom of speech, it's another law that was controversial, just like the concealed carry law was in Illinois. So take that into consideration also, because the council has acted on that in two different occasions, well, city of Joliet, city council on one with the ordinance and the zoning board on the other part. So you've already committed. So now, would you stop him from putting a sign up?
According to this, it says products or drugs, so I would assume that he wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to advertise.
Well, Walgreens, Walgreens, drugs, Osco...
They're not advertising drugs or...
No, but, but there, there's a pharmacy, and, and it's not a drug, it's, it's, it's medical marijuana. It is a, it is a, it is a legal substance, and, and a lot of your medicine is derived from drugs, so you can't use the word drug, you know, in that sense of the game, to try to expel that point.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah. And John, it's a good point, but I would agree with the mayor on that too. The difference would probably be that what course is the medical marijuana facility offering that's mandated by law? I see a distinct difference between the two. The medical marijuana, albeit illegal, the medical marijuana law, or, or facility would be advertising directions to the store to sell medical marijuana. This gentleman's not looking to promote or market the guns because we prohibited it. He's not looking for that, you know, and he's not looking for the, you know, anything against the prohibition against the ammunition, you know? He's looking for, it's a course, you know? What would we say if Juco, I don't know if they still do, I remember years ago, they used to offer like motorcycle safety courses for your license, they offered FOI, FOID card and safety courses. Would we tell them no for their course? And I don't think we would.
I totally support the issue, that they should be allowed to advertise, I don't want to stake that...
Oh, then you're going to take it, but you're taking some of the medical marijuana for...
I totally support the issue.
And, and I suspect medical marijuana and its effects now that it's legal, to be frank, is going to be hotly litigated in the next five or 10 years, you know, so I don't have all those answers yet.
I have one point...
Yeah, done.
KT Community College does teach concealed carry classes in our facility.
Mayor?
Yeah?
I got a question. Could we put this on the next agenda for an up or down vote?
A clarification on the...
Clarification on the, on the issue?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, there are a few contours here, I'm trying to navigate a little bit, but I, I think what I'm hearing is that there are some types of services that are ancillary to firearms that aren't really in the realm of firearms, and, and I've heard the councilmen explain the issue as more of a, a training issue, and, and I can understand that point. And my suggestion would be is, if we want to amend it to exclude safety training and take that away from the, the language that's in there, that's something we can do. I just, you know, I've heard a couple of comments here, and I personally don't have an opinion on this that I'm, I'm trying to defend as the author of the language, other than people will associate a "Welcome to Joliet" sign, and the messaging within that "Welcome to Joliet" array, there's an implicit association between the "Welcome to Joliet" and what's in the message board. And it's unintended by us, we really do not control much of the commercial advertising that's in there. And, but there are some areas that I do know the city generally wants to stay away from. And my major point tonight was to remind the council and people that are here that the city does have more rights under the First Amendment area than you might think when you have a non-public forum like this and you're dealing with very unique property. The other point is, you got to remember that people will associate or could very easily misunderstand what they see, "Welcome to Joliet," and then some sort of advertising which some could perceive as being an endorsement of a controversial subject. And, and people, they will, if you see a concealed carry training, they will associate that with Second Amendment type of issues, and there will be an implicit, implicit association, maybe not an endorsement, but there will be an association. People may say, why would the city put that in their entry monument? Even if it serves a legitimate public purpose, which gun safety training does, of course it does. But that, that's the point I'm trying to make, there's something different about entry monuments than other types of areas where you see advertising. Our name's on it, our logo's on it, we have this hospitality feeling we're trying to convey, but right in the middle of it, for whatever reason, we end up having messaging, sometimes getting it on the fringe of messages that don't reflect the views of the council.
Just a comment, by no means am I pro-gun control. I just have a problem when people pull in into our city and seeing a pistol on that sign advertising concealed carry license or classes. advertising concealed carry license or classes, that just bothers me, that's all I'm going to say.
Do we know that there were going to be a pistol in the area?
Well, that's how they advertise in the paper, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going by. In the paper, they advertise they have a pistol in the paper, and I assume that's what they're, how they're going to advertise it, so.
Well, Mayor, the only thing that I would add to that, though, is, see, now what we're doing is we're discussing effective marketing, and I don't know if there's any or if there's only a few up here that have had experience in marketing. Mr. Plamen, Jeff, you're right, some people might find it, even though it's not controversial, it's legal, they might find it to be distasteful marketing because they don't like the concept of, but you know what, on any given day, 82% might say, "I'm in favor of that." Now we're trying, you know, if you want to do a marketing survey, we can get into that business, I don't want to do that as a council member. I'm talking solely and strictly about how our ordinance is laid out, and it explicitly eliminates firearms, guns, and ammunition, not classes.
All the activities that are restricted are all legal activities, but they're, the type of things that the council has, the controller of this entry monument finds that they don't want to have their name next to. Of course it's all legal, everything in here is illegal, otherwise you wouldn't see it advertised. It is all legal. The question for the council would be, do you want it in your entry monument? And I would suggest, rather than bring it directly to another council meeting, that we have maybe a committee discussion or some more discussion on the subject and maybe have an opportunity to see if we can fashion something that satisfies everybody, because there may be a way to distinguish, to allow advertising that doesn't have objectionable graphics. I don't know, we could talk about that.
Didn't it already fail, the committee couldn't come to a conclusion, that's why we're at a committee as a whole now. So I think I would agree with Councilman Fireland, that we need to just clarify, this is a very specific clarification, as I said from the beginning, and let's have an up or down on the next meeting, on that clarification.
I had one more question on the last one. What was the council's intent with the agreement with this company? You said they're entryway monuments. What's, what, I guess, makes it an entryway? I mean, we talk about the Essington Road and the Black Road Monument, the one by the mall on 50, what is that, Essington and Hennepin? I talked about the one on Larkin, and that, I mean, those are really not entryways, except maybe the one coming out of Crest Hill.
Well, when the idea was first pitched to us, they were all entries, and they were pre-existing monuments, and I think this company has taken that initial concept, and they've gone ahead and have built other monument-like structures at other locations, but when the idea first came to us, it was the pre-existing monuments that we had, for example, out by the Park District or at Larkin and McDonough Street in that area. They're all very nicely landscaped monuments with the flagpoles and the masonry appointments and the city logo on it.
So could the council, as the mayor indicated, put the gun, you don't want to see a gun on there? Could the classes be advertised without any images of something like that, or is that a little?
Well, there are a lot of options, and we can discuss them in any form, the council would choose to pursue it. I just thought council time is valuable, and if we wanted to take a lot of time to discuss details and options, maybe some other committee structure, whether it be a pre-council, whatever the council thought was appropriate. But there are some legal issues here, and there's also a lot of regulatory issues. This is forum space that we control, okay? And so, you know, we have the ability to be a little more rigid, if we want to be, for the public order, because again, whether they're on our boundaries or not, our name is right next to the display panels, and it's a little different than other public space where you might see concealed carry or other types of advertisements.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to put it in perspective, Councilman McFarland, I can see both sides of it, but these are our welcome to Joliet signs, and people that are passing through might pass through for a minute or two or stop a stoplight, maybe see a gun image or a drug image, and, you know, I'm not opposed to this advertising in a tasteful way, but for so long, we were, you know, called the prison town, oh, Joliet's the prison town. Now, do we want our name associated with the drug and gun town? And I'm not saying these folks don't have the right to advertise, but maybe it can be done in a more tasteful way. I haven't seen the advertisement, I have, you know, the gun thing in the paper, but when people come through and they see that, then one thing leads to another. We all know, you can have a blip in a newspaper, and then it gets crazy because this one tells something and adds to it and adds to it and adds to it, and it's different than what the original intent was for. And since we're welcome to Joliet, well then, we'll get, you know, all kinds of, you know, perhaps bad and maybe some good things, but I can see both sides here, and I think maybe this should go to land use committee, council?
It was at the land use.
It was already at committee.
Can it go back to land use for more discussion or perhaps legislative?
Sure.
I, you know.
They're both, yeah.
Same committee.
Same committee, okay, so.
I have.
Can we go back, can we go back and discuss it further and with more detail with?
As it is now, not knowing, excuse me, I'm sorry.
I was saying, can we go back to the committee with our council and perhaps detail it more efficiently and, you know, see what do we want to see, not prohibit people from advertising, but doing it in a more tasteful manner?
As it is now, I, you know, just blanket, I, there's no way I can support it. If it goes back to the committee, maybe have the people that do the concealed carry, if they can come up with some kind of advertising that's not a gun on there, maybe soften a little bit, something like that.
Mr. Mayor, if I, it's kind of funny, Mr. Sheridan talked about medical marijuana, and this was written before medical marijuana was legal.
Right.
And so I'm not even sure this language would prohibit that, and so we probably might want to amend it, anyway.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just want to speak, the legislative committee, we didn't not come to an agreement, we just felt that it should come, you know, in the council. I don't think it was a disagreement or on that. The other thing is, there was an ad, I guess, that was supposed to run, that didn't run. Is it possible that we could get a copy of that ad? Because I would have to, you know, feel like the mayor, I think a gun is kind of sending out a bad signal, but if it, and even maybe the word gun in that, but I don't think it has to say gun, it's concealed, what is it called? Concealed carry classes. I mean.
Right.
I can, I think that would be fine, me personally, that's my opinion.
I agree with you.
Yeah. But if we can get the copy of the ad that was going to run.
Sure, we can contact the company and see what.
And then we can have it at committee with.
I certainly agree with Councilman Morris about seeing this ad. When we talk about marketing and quick advertising, you know, pictures always, you know, take up a lot in words, and so I too would love to have come back to committee with the copy of the ad. I certainly agree that our welcoming signs are positive pieces for this city, and we do not want to portray something like that that will immediately send out the wrong negative message about our city, so I would love to see it come back to committee where we could dig down and peel back a little bit deeper and maybe come up with some.
If there's no objection, we'll send it back to the.
No, I'm fine with that, I would just say, make sure we consider that if they do a re-release or remix of the Dirty Harry movies and they want to advertise it, you know, we're talking about an image of a gun. And I thought the ordinance was reading, so please be careful in committee, the ordinance is reading what they're trying to sell, not just the image itself.
I understand.
But I have no objection, Mayor.
Did you want to say something, Roger?
Roger Thompson, 1110 Nicholson Street. Would we get enough sufficient public input to help with this decision? I tend to agree with what you're saying, but, and what works today and what's objectionable today may not be objectional five years from now. I don't know, I'm just asking.
It'll change in a couple of weeks, maybe things are gone.
Well, Mayor?
Yes.
The land use committee, when it's on the agenda, it'll be posted and advertised.
Open to the public.
Absolutely.
It's open to the public.
Good.
Okay. Comments?
We did have a request for a citizen to speak briefly this evening.
Okay, that would be.
Councilman?
Name and address, please.
And all those that hear the sound of my voice, I came out personally to invite.
Name and address, please.
Aura Holloway, 824 West Jefferson Street, that's my church location, 103 Gerard is my home address, and I came out to invite you all out to our third annual God in the City Gates Prayer Walk. It will be coming, this coming Saturday, May 24th, 2014. It will kickoff at 10:45. Is kickoff four? Let me read my notes.
11:45.
Lineup, 10:45, at the Will County Visitation Center, and the kickoff will be at 11:45. And you all should already have a copy of it. Okay, so we just invite you all out to participate with us and also to the crusade, we will be starting out right after the prayer walk, it's May 24th, May 31st through June 29th. So we kind of combining our efforts on this year to make a better and a more powerful impact on our community. One of the reasons for doing the prayer walk is to kind of reunite governmental leaders back to the community. People want to see your faces more, if I can put it like that. So we created this prayer walk to give you an opportunity to come out and mingle with the community, and the people can see you and you can see the people, then say a few words and just reunite yourself with the community. And let me go, because I'm getting nervous. You're all aware.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is mayor and council comment.
Betty, comments?
Yes, sir, thank you. And Pastor, thank you so much. I will be at my grandson's graduation on the 24th, but I will certainly be out there for the kickoff, and we're looking forward to it. We're getting all revved up for it, so I will join you on the 31st when we're back, My comment tonight, and I want to direct this to Mr. Hawk, there was an incident about a couple of weeks ago, maybe a little bit more, that occurred in a local bar, and during this, this incident, an innocent couple was viciously beaten and racial slurs, thrown at them, and so Joliet gained some national attention, not the attention that we would want. And so my question is, sir, that if we could have staff look at, or maybe yourself, is there a, an ordinance or a policy or, I know other cities that deal with this, and if we can kind of look at that. Joliet will not tolerate such a thing as this, and we need to be ahead of it, and so I'm asking for your help and maybe helping me to identify or helping us to identify what we can do to be ahead of this, sir.
We can certainly put together some, assemble some policies that other cities have adopted and present that to the diversity committee.
Yes, sir, thank you, and my apologies to those residents that had to undergo that.
Just a comment, Detective Comment has been working on that, he's building a case, investigating it, so.
Great, great, thank you.
I have no comments, Your Honor.
We're going to be celebrating Memorial Day, I'd just like to take a moment to thank all, all those that have fallen in the service of our country. You know, every day, many of us are asked to make sacrifices, but there is no sacrifice, I should say, the ultimate sacrifice is unparalleled, and I do thank the veterans since the start of this country for sacrificing. The only other thing I would make a comment about is, I would like to put out a blanket thank you, I couldn't list the names, there's too many of them, short version. Last Wednesday, my mother had been taken to the hospital with some sudden medical condition, and she passed away this morning after being in a coma, and both myself, my family, my brothers, the way people reached out on the phone, in person, even through social media since last Wednesday was overwhelming and extremely important in the process, so just a blanket statement to everybody out there, thank you.
Jim?
No comments.
I have nothing.
Just Larry, condolences to you and your family, and I second your thoughts on Memorial Day. No comments, sir.
Jim?
Just a couple, Larry, I already talked to you, I'm very sorry about your mom, there's another hurt worse than losing your mother. Been there, done that, so I, sympathies go out to you and your family. Let's remember all our veterans, absolutely, those that are passed on and those that are fighting now for our freedoms, because we can't take that for granted. On a lighter note, this Memorial Day weekend, the Slammers have a bunch of things going on, there's superhero night, there's 60s band on Saturday night, and also for the kids on Sunday, there's a candy land with many surprises, so if you want to take your kids to a ballgame, there's nothing more fun than that, especially this long weekend. And Pastor Holloway, I will not be there either on the 24th, as that is our 34th wedding anniversary, and my husband and I will be celebrating, and this will be especially good for us because he had that terrible accident in February, and I'm just glad that he's here to celebrate it. So, but I will be there for the kickoff on May 31st, I haven't missed one yet, and it will be the fifth year in a row, and the crusades are very nice, they're on the east side, west side, north side, and the south side of the city, they move the tent once a week, and if you have never been out there, it's a great time for fellowship and hymns, and it's really a great night for coming together with the community. And on that note, please stay safe this weekend, thank you.
Mike?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd just like to say that congratulations to the Slammers, opening night was Friday night, weather was terrible, it was drizzling, it was cold, but I thought they had a very respectable crowd for their weather conditions, they had a great three-day home stand, they won all three games, they had a great time on the field. Also, my way down here tonight, I was coming down Jefferson Street and noticed that the construction at Caterpillar Drive and Jefferson Street, they're moving dirt out there now, so the, or the Aldi and those other places are going, that's under construction, which is great, and as I told Larry earlier, my condolences to, on the loss of your mother and to your entire family.
Just condolences, Larry, about your mother. Thank you to all our veterans, I know they're having a service out at Dever and Lincoln Cemetery Monday, which I'll be attending, I believe it starts at 11 o'clock, so again, thank you to all our veterans. That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn?
Let me shoot me first.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, meaning adjourn.